I'm wearing some cabbie just for you.
All right, here we go.
Just so you know, I did not come looking like this. Nick, I had on a nice outfit.
Sure.
And they told me I could go home and change.
I think it was a great move.
Tonight it's appropriate.
Tonight I can get away with it.
Okay, we're going to call to meeting the regular order of January 8th, 2024. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Gould?
There.
Hauser?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
Thank you. Will you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everybody. We are going to have a pretty brief meeting so we can all go home and watch an addition of Law &amp; Order or something. So we're going to make this a pretty quick meeting so everybody can get home. So first, we have some sad news that we are, and I want to recognize Councilmember Doug Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, at the end of last year, I received an unexpected call from a colleague offering me a job out of state in Texas. Represents an incredible opportunity and a next professional challenge in my life, and after much consternation, I have decided to resign from council and take the position. This was not an easy choice. I love this community. My wife loves this community. My wife's actually going to stay here for a period of time, and I'll be coming back regularly. It has been an absolute honor to serve the citizens of Rochester. I want to thank folks for awarding me a second term on this council. I'm very grateful for that and very respectful for that. Certainly to thank my fellow council members. I've learned an incredible amount from all of you, past and present, and probably future as I tune in and watch the meetings from Texas, including, yeah, probably won't happen.
That's really sweet. We have recorded ones, too, you guys nostalgically.
I also wanted to thank all of the folks that work for the city, the city administration, of course, Leann and Nick and the chiefs, and it just, I've, this has been an incredible experience. I've always tried to do a good thing and what I thought was best for the city, and everybody I work with up here has made it so much easier and more enjoyable. It's just been such a pleasure. I've, as I said, I've learned so much, and I have such tremendous respect. So I'm very sad to be doing this and stepping down, but I trust that the city is in most capable and excellent hands. So, thank you.
Thank you, Doug. So, before we get into saying nice things about Doug...
Or not.
Assuming, or not. So, I'm just going to, so there is going to be an opening. Today is Doug's last meeting. So the city charter says the city council shall appoint a new member if there's a vacancy. So we will appoint a new person. The council has 60 days from the resignation, so the clock starts today. If you are interested, and this is how we've done this now, this will be the third time we've done this in the last few years, which is unusual, but it is what it is. The procedure is you send an email to the city clerk, Leann O'Connor, by January 31st stating an interest in the position. So you don't have to send a long letter or anything like that. Just send something to the city clerk stating that you are interested in being considered for the position, and then the city clerk will email all of us, letting us know who is there. And then you can reach out to council people. Council people can reach out to you, however you want to do it. Then the meeting on February 12th, which is the first meeting in February, candidates can address the council with a brief presentation if they choose to. And then the council, after that, the council can make a decision on seating a new council person. The council doesn't have to do that, but the council can do that, and the anticipation is that we will do that. It takes a majority vote, so you have to have four votes to do that, and somebody will nominate that person. So you have until January 31st. I asked the city clerk to put that on the website to get the word out to people, and you know, anybody, anybody can apply, and the city council will consider that. And again, at the February 12th meeting, I think everybody can, everybody on here can attend that meeting, so we will have a full house. So, question on that.
Can you clarify when the term would expire for that opening?
So even though, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So even though Councilmember Gould won a four-year term, the person will have to run for reelection in the 2025 election. And it's kind of complicated, and we'll get into that. There's going to be a regular city council election with four seats open, and then there's going to be a special election, the same election for that seat to fulfill the remaining two years of the term. So you will not have to run for two years on this term appointment.
Right.
Anything else on the kind of the mechanics? And again, also have here, and if you have any questions, please reach out to the city attorney, the city clerk, the city manager, or any of us up here. We can answer questions. But it doesn't have to be a long, you know, resume. Just communicate to the city clerk that you have an interest, and then we'll figure it out from there. Okay, so I would just like to say it's both sad and it's both a happy and sad day. We're happy for Councilmember Gould, that he had this tremendous opportunity, and is going to take it to better his career and his family, and so we wish you well, and congratulations. Sounds like a fabulous job offer. It's going to be sad because I think we're losing somebody who's very good on the council. I've very much enjoyed working with you. I think you've added a lot of very steady decisions, and also I consider you a friend, and we will miss you seeing you around. But just so you know that Rochester is always here, waiting for you to come back.
Thank you, sir.
So, and we do, I want to say thanks to the city management that we even got a plaque together.
Wow.
You've got to have a plaque, right?
Right.
So just real briefly, whereas Doug Gould elected city council in November 2021, served through 2024, is a proud resident, has been committed to making Rochester a great place to live, and Mr. Gould has contributed his time, energy, and passion to the city's boards and commission. And I will also say you ran three times.
I did.
Which is a lot of work.
Yeah.
So now, therefore being claimed that the city council hereby expresses our sincere appreciation of Doug Gould for his years of service, signed the 8th day of January 2004. So Doug, congratulations on this.
Thank you, sir.
Other council members. Councilmember Sage, we can just go right up the line.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gould, it has been an honor to have served with you, and I have really appreciated your insight on many issues, and I congratulate you on...
Thank you.
On the move.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Jones?
Well, I really didn't serve with you too much, so I can't say that. But it was great running a campaign next to yours and your support, and you were very helpful, and I enjoyed that process with you being part of it, and good luck.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trent?
Yes, congratulations on your new job, and it'll be, in Texas, it'll be warmer there.
It might.
I've lived in the South for a while. It's going to be really, really warm. You have lots of air, good air conditioning. So I did, I enjoyed working with you very much on, and I, and on the two committees as well, the Sister City Committee, and I'll miss you there, and, and the City Beautiful Commission. You learned about, you know...
Absolutely.
You know, native plants and everything else, you know? What can I say?
I know a lot about native plants.
Yes, you did. And just remember, the monarch butterfly will be flying north, and Texas is their first stop, so...
I'll get a picture.
You can still plant, you can still plant milkweed starting March, April. They're going to, you need, they need that first push to, you know, get the next generation to the middle of, I don't know, middle of the United States.
I hope I'm not the only person in Texas that knows that.
I don't know, but I expect you to spread the word, and I, on this end, will pick up the buy local. I will carry that water or gauntlet forward for you. Yes, so, yes, so, and it was an honor.
Thank you.
I'll miss you.
Councilmember Hauser?
Doug, you know, Marilyn kind of stole my thunder, because that was my note, is that although we've only worked on council for about six to seven weeks, I always appreciated your commitment to local businesses and state businesses and always making that a priority. So, again, with Councilperson Trent, no, it's important. No, 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 seriously, it's important, but I also appreciate all the work that you've done for the city. I certainly realize what it's like to have to knock on doors and campaign and do it, and you put a heck of a lot of work in, and it's unfortunate that it came at this time, but I wish you nothing but the best for you and your family, okay?
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Your pro temp, Salvia.
Thank you. I'll just, I'll just echo and pile on, but really, Doug, it really has been a pleasure serving with you. You know, you're just very pragmatic. You stepped up, served wherever you were needed, really helpful, really thoughtful, and I'm going to miss serving with you. You've worked really hard to get this seat, and now you just get to work hard for this next new job, and I'm sure it'll be exciting and a challenge, and I hope it's fantastic for you and your family.
Thank you very much, Nancy. I appreciate that.
Nick, did you want to?
Yeah, so I said my goodbyes to Doug already, but it's 105 in Texas all the time. Take that. And I don't like you anymore, but that's okay. We'll, we'll make sure your house is safe while your family's still here. We'll take care of that for you, but it's been a blast getting to know you. It just took a lot of patience, man, some of the committees that you're on. We had a lot of in-depth talks about a lot of stuff, but you, your patience of job stuck out with me. It's just, that's, it's, I know what you do for a living, and I'm sure you're tired of what we all go through as public servants, and you fit right in there right out of the gate, and I appreciated that.
Thank you, sir.
And appreciated your support, too. So I know you're going to do great things, so lucky for Texas.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, Doug, and I know deep down somewhere in there, there's a good, solid Michigan man tonight. Next is public comment. Is there any comment out there tonight? Moving on, is approval of the minutes, consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting of December 18th, 2023. Tom, over to Trent.
Yeah, I will make a motion to approve their regular meeting minutes of December 18th.
Motion by Councilmember Trent.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sage?
Yeah.
Trent?
Yes.
Your next is approve the consent agenda. Do you like my way of not having anything in a rash meeting tonight?
Shocking.
Old business, table items, public hearing, legislative deliberation. First is a consideration, ordinance amendment to section 54-410, standards for stormwater management plan approval, first reading and adoption. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, so Attorney, Attorney Croft, there he is. He's, he's working from home this evening, so he can watch the game quicker than we can, I think. Not true. I appreciate you staying there, Jeff. In your packet is the amendment that Jeff will talk about in a minute, but then he asked us tonight, which is at your desks, to show a redacted, not redacted, but a, what's the changes in blue. It is in this case, so Holly put those together for all of you, so when he goes over this, she'll be able to see what the changes were. In your packet is the clean version, and there should, there's one that's the version that's got blue on it, I believe. You got it? So Jeff, you want to explain that, Jeff, a little bit?
Absolutely. Good evening. I talked to Director Mizikar, and the city's MS4 permit renewal is here, and as part of that process, Eagle has reviewed the city's stormwater ordinance to determine whether or not any updates are required as we, the city is required to adopt whatever stormwater regulations that they require. And at this go-round, only just a few changes were noted by Eagle that require review, none of which I believe are substantial, I think, or substantive for that matter. You'll see the first one, and I apologize in the packet, apparently the, a clean version ended up what I sent to the city, which was a little odd, so. So you'll see the, the blue line, I guess, on your end. It is in section 54-410 is where all these changes occur, first one being in subsection A4 at the end there. You'll see that the only change in there is to remove the sub-paragraph B, and then, so C moves up to B, and then the detention requirement waiver is for events up to two years instead of one year. That's the change there. And then subsection 6 is the other set of changes, where there's a definition in there that says water quality volume is the runoff volume from a site based on a post-development site condition of a 1.0 inch rainfall event. I know everyone understands that completely. So that's, I think Director Mizikar is probably there if any questions on the technical end, and if not, then our certain engineers can do that. And then looks like the subsection 10, there's just a reference change to the most current volume, which is NOAA Atlas 14. So I really don't think that there's any substantive changes in here, but there are ones that Eagle is requiring. So if the city council is ready to move forward with those tweaks, then the first, then the requested action is to move the ordinance amendment for first reading and introduction with the second meeting and for second reading and approval at the next meeting.
Council?
Yeah. Oh, there.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you for clarifying the changes. The blue line copy was really helpful. So I'd like to make a motion to move this forward for first reading and introduction at our next meeting.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Salvia. Support?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Jones. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the report.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Next on reports from regular business, a consideration request to approve up to $31,327 to Waste Management for the removal of catch basin debris. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, so Alec and Jason are here to go over some details, but we talked about earlier that over the years, when we clean storm basins and things like that, we go to the old weep yards down at the training center, and Jason was good enough to find a contractor to get at it, and they did, and there was more there than we thought. So we hit the wall, but instead of stopping, I told him, why don't we come to council? They have funds, they, Alec identified the fund source, and get this done now, so that when we start putting the new things this season, we're not going over old stuff and just doubling up. And then we'll manage that process better now that we know where it can go, who can take it to where it needs to go, and then we'll be able to keep up on it and not have to do it in such, you know, wait five years to do it, so.
Yep, so just to clarify, this is debris and soils taken from our tractor trucks. We use this to clean catch basins. We use it when we hydroexulate for water or sewer construction projects. So this isn't sewage that's getting put in there. So it was tested to make sure that it was clean for landfill and did come back to be suitable for landfill. So I've been working with Waste Management to haul this off to, I forgot the name of the landfill, Eagle, Eagle Valley. Thank you, Jason. And so for initial estimates, thought we could, we would be under the city manager's, you know, authorized spending limits, but it's a little bit heavier and a bit more than we thought. So we are here in front of you now to ask for a little bit more funds to get the job done instead of stopping halfway through, we'd like to get it coined up. We have a coin slate moving forward so we can get a more routine schedule and hauling these out.
Council? Councilmember Hauser?
I don't want to throw a wrench in this, but is there a process where alternative numbers would have come out to, does it make sense to go out and see if there's other people who might be able to do it for less money, or is time an issue and obviously seasonal limitations?
Yeah, I think, go ahead.
Yep, so I know Jason's reached out to a few different haulers, and he can talk more about that. It seems like Waste Management was really one of the only ones in the area that was suitable to do this type of work.
Okay.
Yes, we did go initially.
Available to do this type of work.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia, you had a question?
Yeah, just, it looks like we've got four different general ledgers that we kind of pulled funds from. I, I don't know those general ledger numbers. What are they?
Yep, the first two are from major and local streets that the line item is just, I believe, catch basin removal. The third one is from the Water and Sewer Fund, or sorry, yeah, Water and Sewer Fund for just contractual services. And then the fourth one is a line item specific for sewer, like root control, which we are not going to plan on doing this year. So we'll be getting new pricing from the contractor we've been using for the past five years for a new contract to start that again next fiscal year, so end of summer.
I did reach out to multiple haulers. The price difference would only be trucking, so it was more advantageous just to go directly to Eagle Valley. And if the soils would have came back different, this would have been a lot more. It's because it's clean, it could go there, and it's closer, so there were shorter trips, and they were within $5 of each item for the trucking. So now we have contract signed with them. They'll come and test it for us, and then we decided, can we go there again, or will it go to another place? Because each laboratory results would be a different location.
Thank you.
Councils, is there a motion?
Yep, so I'll make a motion to agree to pay the $31,000 for this particular line item for work.
Motion by Councilmember Hauser.
Support.
Support by Mayor Pro Tem Salvia. Discussion, no. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you, gents. Jason. Next is the receipt, receipt of the check register, if anybody has any questions or comments. And now we move on to receive a report from the various boards and commission versus the Paint Creek Trailway Commission. Councilmembers here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item is concerning Bridge 31-7 here within our municipality. We had earlier this past year received the award of the TAP grant for $720,000. We just recently were informed that the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, also, we were approved for a grant there of $300,000. So we're at 1.2, and likely the project is going to cost close to $1,200,000 to $1.5 million. So we'll have to make up that shortfall, but it is nice to have almost 90% covered there.
Excellent.
The anticipated funding, based on the legislature and their timing, would likely be Q3 of this year, so we probably wouldn't start the project until spring, and that still is within the contained timing. Once it's approved, we have two years to finish the project, so we would, we would still be protected there. The 40th anniversary of the Paint Creek Trail is coming up this year, and we will celebrate that with a 5K on April 21st of this year, and that coordinates directly with the National Rails to Trails Day. We did finalize our budget for the 2024 fiscal year there on the trail. We, all municipalities incurred a 2% increase, the, for their contribution to the trail. That equates to $367 increase to the city of Rochester. And then finally, we had officer elections, and it is customary that we try and involve all of the municipalities within the board to serve in those executive positions, and I have agreed to take on the role of chairperson for this year.
Wow.
So now I know who to call if there's issues?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we see a report from Rara. Councilmember Jones, your first meeting?
Yes, it was my first meeting, so it was fun to sit back in that seat again after a few years. We did a few things. We decided and approved our meeting calendar for next year. We decided on subcommittees, and I will be sitting on the Budget Committee and the Policy and Procedures Committee. They have done a lot since last I sat there. It's amazing what work they, they've gotten done, and Mark Albrecht had a lot to do with what got done there, as far as the employee piece of things and putting together a handbook, putting together a review process, I guess, that they had not had very, done very well in the past. They now have professional development that people that work there are required to do. They have a wage and salary scale that they've put together. So I was like head spinning with how much they've done. They are, I had an open house this past week from the 3rd to the 5th. They're trying to develop more, people coming in, obviously, and using Raya, Rara, sorry, and the dance program is not doing so great, so they've got to make some decisions about the dance program. They're giving it kind of one final shot. They're getting a new playscape, which I guess is sort of a big deal. That draws a lot of people in, but it's old and needed to be redone. And they did put together a program, a sponsorship program and partnership program, which is quite exciting, to get some of the businesses in town to support different events that they're doing, so they're kind of finalizing all of that. That's that.
Very good. Thank you. Next is a report from the Asset Committee. Councilmember Hauser?
Sure. So on January 5th, I attended a second asset management committee since being on city council. I would like to say that it was a very comprehensive and detailed meeting in a sense that Alec had done a very good job of putting together an agenda, and included in the agenda was a map of all the city streets, and identified specifically areas of concern in the short term and in the long term of reconstruction, whether it's milling and filling or curb replacement, et cetera. And then we discussed whether or not these are city projects or non, or DDA projects, and kind of the balance and interplay between those two. I will tell you, in this information, this packet, one question I had, is this information available online for the public? Is that something that can be made available? Because I noticed it's not on the website, and I think it would be very helpful to make that available, because the information is very detailed and thorough. But there's a lot of numbers in here, and I know Mayor Pro Tem wanted to add to that as well a little bit, but it's certainly going to be something as we move forward to identify and address the total cost for some of this work. You know, there's some line items and some ideas and concepts of what it's going to cost, but I think we might have to go a little bit deeper and really determine what the actual cost is going to be in moving these forward. So that was all discussed. We talked about the parking lots, the maintenance in the parking decks, et cetera, and then some of these sanitary, sanitary and storm sewer open cut projects. We have designated February 12th as the next meeting at 4 o'clock PM here at City Hall, and included, again, if these maps or if these documents are available online, public can see what roads, the priority, the dollar amount associated with those particular repairs. But Mayor Pro Tem, I know you wanted to add a comment on some of the budget numbers.
I do. I just, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to give an example of, as we're looking at total cost, we've always said the parking system costs $1,005,000, and it brings in $1,005,000. It's break even. Well, but we weren't taking into account the total cost. All of the surface lots need maintenance, so if you add that in, it's something north of 1.5 million. So really, the Asset Management Committee is looking to look at it, a total cost, whether it be facilities, water, sewer, roads, parking systems, and really make sure that we have our plans in line to support that. So, and then another thing I'd add is, we added the mayor to the committee.
Yes.
So Stuart joined us for that meeting, and will be part of the committee going forward.
That's correct. Lots of big dollar numbers out there. Next is a report from the Budget and Finance Committee. Councilmember Trent?
Yes, on Thursday, December 21st, was our last budget meeting of the year. We went over the fund balance and policy review, getting ready for, to create this year's annual budget. We're all working on that. We reviewed the SWOT exercise outcomes. The city council did one, one of that, or one of our meetings that we participated in last fall as part of our review, and that, and the SWOT is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, that each one of us individually felt was important, and that was reviewed. We discussed and reviewed the parking system costs, forecasts, and projected costs. So I'm not going to go into that. And we also were celebrating the grant from MNRTF, all these acronyms, acronyms that was approved for the, the Bridge 31.7. I like that name, Bridge 31.7. If you're into naming things. But yeah, that was exciting. And last but not least, two goals and objective meeting set for, for the city council and city department heads as we get ready to, to work together, to take time to really figure out where, what money we have, where, where does it need to be spent? And do we have any additional projects that we hope to spend them on? So we talk about that for two days, January 20 and January 24. I hear that January 20 could be a little, a little cold and windy and blizzardy, but we will bring our warm, warm blankets. And we're not going to stop. We're coming, we're coming, come to that meeting. I need a commitment now, because I'm getting ready. Thanks. And Happy New Year, everyone.
Yeah. Thank you. We, we agreed on 8:00 on the 15th, right? Didn't we?
On that, no, for the, the goals and objectives is January 20.
No, I know, but the next.
Oh, on the 15th, yes. We agreed at 8:00 AM.
Did we?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Yeah, that one was eight, I think, yeah.
And then, Mr. City Manager, when is the packet of information for the Saturday you think tentatively is going to hit all of us?
The week before, about seven days before. We just had, we had staff, went over our first meeting last Friday, and this Thursday, we finished our packet, then we get ready to start sharing.
It's it.
So just for the new people, just so they know, a week before, you're going to get a packet. I don't know if you're going to email it or send it.
Both. We can either have it physically printed, or we can send it email.
Choose.
Okay.
You have a week to take a look at.
Yeah, I think it's 9:00 to noon, or it's a half day, right?
At least, yeah.
Yeah, at the fire station. Yeah.
Yeah, fire station, but we'll, we'll go through.
We'll get all through that, yeah. Get in the particulars, yeah.
Is there any further public comment tonight? Okay. Onto general miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager, anything?
Yeah, just two things. I'd like to thank Anthony for stepping in. I went down to Nashville, see Charlie and Nick and Steph, even had a great time. But that's a pretty cool place for families and stuff, and so much to do down there. But it was a lot of fun. And then second, this Friday, myself and some of our key staff are going to entertain the executive committee from MML. So they're in at the Royal Park for two days. They asked if we, I would speak to them for, in the morning. So we're going to take them to the fire hall, feed them some breakfast, probably do a quick tour downtown, meet at the collaboration station. So we'll, we'll show off our best. If it's dark enough, we'll turn the lights on for them, too, so they can see it. But they've all been in town the night before, so that should be a good time. That's it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Gould, for the last time?
Thank you very much, it's been a pleasure.
Mayor Pro Tem, Salvia?
Thank you. Just wanted to wish everyone Happy New Year. And I read today that February 17, Oakland University, their men's basketball, they're calling it City of Rochester game. So Saturday, February 17, at 3:00, Oakland University, men's basketball, City of Rochester.
How do we get tickets?
I don't know, we should all be there.
Right.
We should.
Nick, can you look in?
Yeah, I will.
Good marketing, right.
And what if they're playing Rochester University?
They are playing IUPU.
Oh, yeah, yeah.